For April the 6th, I call the meeting to order and if you can join me in the pledge to the flag. One announcement that we do have is the spring cleanup is scheduled for Saturday, May 1st, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM and later on in here, we'll have another announcement about electronic recycling at all, so be part of that.
What about then, if I could ask, what about, I was asked about tires?
We're waiting to find out a price on that. We should have that for the regular board meeting in order to announce if we're able to do it and how much it'll be for that.
Thank you.
Number two is our board discussion creation of agenda items. Before we begin with that, Brandy, you had some information that you wanted to present to the board regarding utilization of funding for a project and I did have conversation with the boards that they do know that you do have a line with funding in there that is a result of the other work that the Energy Committee has done. So that it's not money that's being taken out of any particular line, but it's money that has been in in an account as a result of the work of the Energy Committee.
Right. So when we, we got certified a climate smart community, we were given a $5,000 check that went into a special bank fund. We don't touch it unless we need it for, you know, informational flyers and things like that. We have 4,800 of it left, so approximately. So, so what came up was NYSERDA has a grant available for towns like ours. It's done a lot of work, you know, sustainable green work. And it's called a Clean Energy Communities Grant and we're eligible for $10,000 grant. They take into account all the projects we've done that apply to this grant, like the food composter, that's not, that's not accepted here. But there's plenty of other things that we've done. The LED streetlights is on there. So anyway, we're 900 points to receive the grant, the $10,000. So originally I reached out to Kelly, our bookkeeper, and I copied her with Nicholas. Nicholas used to work for the Clean Energy Communities office. And I asked her to do what Karen had done is give us some data to show reduction of, you know, greenhouse gas in Tustin. And you can document that by looking at the NICE egg bills, looking at the propane bills and anyway, so she had set up a special folder for Kelly to work from. Kelly never got back to me or Nicholas several times. So I don't know what else to do except to suggest that we hire Nicholas unless Kelly's ready and like well and out of the hospital and all that stuff and wants to do it. That's up to you guys, but I just didn't see it. No one's responding. And we have a deadline here because it's first come, first served money in New York State, especially with this kind of thing. So anyway, in order to get those, those numbers, we could either have our bookkeeper do it, which would be great. Karen, I've spoken to her, the old bookkeeper. She said she would work with her, run her through it. It's very easy once you know where it is. Maybe it's just something new. I don't know, but or we can pay Nicholas with the $50 an hour rate that he has to give him access to our NICE account. And he can pull numbers for the last three years and do it pretty quickly. He would not charge more than $2,000, probably a lot less than that. Anyway, so the path forward with the NYSERDA grant to get those 900 points, I've broken it down. The advanced benchmarking, which is what this is, what that one element is, when you look at all your numbers and you see the reduction in your town of greenhouse gas emissions, that yields 200 points. An air source heat pump, if you put it in like that bank building that you guys are getting, that's 500 points. And we put one in the offices upstairs and in the basement in Town Hall and they're great because it serves as an air conditioning, as a heating unit, depending on what you switch it over to and what season. It's really energy efficient. That's why they're recommending those for town buildings. So I'm just breaking down options, how we could achieve that 900 points. And everything's broken down to points when you're applying for grants. So the continuing education for town code enforcer on green building practices in New York State would yield another 200 points. The course is free and I know that Jim has taken green courses in the past. I, you know, I would really hope that he would do that. It's not available yet, but it's coming up in the next couple of months. If he did that, then we have our 900 points. I think it's worth it because, you know, money for accomplishments is worth it because then we can fund something else. We never jumped into any kind of project that cost the town money. Solaray didn't cost any money. You know, the horse doesn't cost us any money. Whatever it is, we're really like trying to do this by using grant money, which is, you know, a great option. So if we got the, the grant, then you'd have to go back to NYSERDA and they'd say, here's your grant application. These are the things that you can do with that grant money. It's not wide open, you know, for an imagination. Because I had a whole list and I was talking to Nicholas the other day and he's like, no, you can't do that. You can't do that because it's not related to clean energy. It's very specific. Not just green or recycling, it has to be about clean energy. So anyway, these are some of the things you could do. And by the way, we're pretty close to getting the 20,000 grant if we got the $10,000 grant. So I'm going to just, these are the few things that I wrote at the end of the email. We could get 4,000 additional points if, let's see, you know, okay. I think what happens is you get 400, 4,000 additional points if you get the $10,000 grant. So I'm kind of working forward and backwards here. Clean fleets, that's either if we put a charging station, we could put it up in the new bank parking lot. Again, the, the union has, you know, those, we may not want to. That's why I've been kind of hesitant about that because it already exists and it's not that far away. You could get 300 points if you got a clean, an electric vehicle like Bethel has. And they use that for, you know, town business. You can get also, you can, well, first of all, you can lease it, you can buy it. There's lots of opportunities for towns with very low interest and things like that. You could also get a truck. I know that we're all diesel. Through no fault of anybody, but the diesel truck is not, you know, really great for the environment, but so we kind of, I'd love to segue out of that, but again, this is a big ask. I don't want to push this on anyone, but that's 300 points. And then community choice aggregation is 2,000 points. We had Dick Risley come in and talk about that a couple of times over the last several years. Basically, the town would exercise its purchasing power, a bulk purchasing power and purchase the energy, clean energy that we estimate that we use for all residents and every resident could opt out. I, you know, for me, that's a hard sell because then you have to making everybody kind of become conscious of this and act and react to this. So again, I'm not pushing that, but these are just things down, down the road. So if you have any questions, I could answer anything you might not want to know.
Anybody on the board have any questions?
I do.
Okay, I got a question from Jane.
Brandy?
Yeah.
When I first heard about this, I spoke to Dave Buns, our water person, supervisor, intended, whatever. And he said that the water department could use, oh, it's something that regulates the pumps. Instead of the pumps going on on a, on a regular basis, it would only go on as needed. And I wonder if you would get points if you did something like that.
Well, I, I really need specifics from Dave if you could get me that.
I will.
Yeah, because I inquired about using the 10, some of the $10,000 for this project or that project. You know, like start a good idea to use solar panels for traffic. You know, vehicles to sit there with the, if we're having an event to give people information, it would just be solar, but that's not acceptable because it's not an ongoing thing. It's just for an event. So that's no good. I asked about the water department and he was pretty hard pressed to find anything in the, in the water department, although we have this major infrastructure recall. I think maybe if you could give me that, I'll look into it as soon as I can. Yeah, because again, he said water is hard because it's not really about energy. So.
No, but this is something, the other thing that we talked about, and I don't know, I don't know if we got or not. Is, oh, something to remotely control the temperature in Town Hall? Did we get that? Do you remember that, Brandy? We had talked.
I, I've never heard of that before. No, I don't know what we're talking about.
Well, that was when Carol was here. We talked about getting that so that if somebody rented Town Hall and they forgot to turn the heat down in the winter, whoever is in charge of that, the building department, they could check it and turn down the heat remotely.
I have no idea.
Okay. All right.
I have a couple of questions, Brandy.
Yeah.
I'm at a disadvantage tonight because I can't get on to the, my phone. So part of what you said, I heard and part I didn't. So if you could, could you go back over the advanced benchmarking? Because I went on the website and looked all this stuff up that, and I guess for 200 points, you have to have advanced benchmarking. So if you can tell, be a little specific because I didn't hear that part of it.
So advanced bookmark, a benchmarking is when you look at all the electric bills that the town pays. And it's broken down into kilowatt hours and, and how much we're using. And over the past several years, because we've had the solar array that, that supplies power to all the buildings and facilities that the town owns, it's dramatically gone down. And so that's, that's just an indicator that this town is taking seriously, you know, greenhouse emissions reduction. And so that, that's what that shows. If we have a reduction in using propane or gas as well, or oil for heating, that too has to be figured into this calculation.
Okay. And so can you, do you have the data in, in front of you as to what projections you had for this, at this point in time?
No, I had, I don't have the last three years. I've been waiting to get that. I have no.
But I mean, you must have had projections that you came up with before we even got into this to tell us how much we would be saving.
Several years ago, I mean, we were carbon neutral like several years ago. Just, it's just kind of going to show the ongoing reduction of, in the town use. I don't have it in front of me. I mean, we could look at the grant application because we're climate smart community because of that. The advanced benchmarking is a huge part of it. It's basically making a graph and it's, it's.
Yeah, I know. I understand that. I just.
Yeah.
I understand that. I just wanted to know if you knew what your projections were and what, you know, what those projections were for this time at this point.
I don't because I can't get my hands on the data. I just don't have.
I, I think, I think what he's asking, and Al can correct me if I'm wrong, is when you started with your energy savings, was there a projection when you started at whatever your first year was to say, we believe that in year five, we should be at a 10 or a 20 or a 30% reduction in energy that we've utilized? And then, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brandy, this, what you're asking for to show would show if it's on target for whatever, if you had that particular number in the beginning?
Um, I know that like we're incredibly diligent at all these, these efforts. So I don't have specific numbers, but it's far exceeded what anyone ever would have projected. I mean, like Nicholas said, I, you know, he's working with big towns. He's like, nobody makes efforts like this anywhere in New York State. So I can't give you a total, there's a reason we were certified, the 19th town in, in New York State, a climate smart community. It's so hard to get that certification. You have to jump through a million hoops and get all these programs moving and finalized and documents, everything. So I don't have any numbers to say, but I'm telling you, we're doing better than anyone ever thought we would.
Well, that might be what you're, you're anticipating, but again, Ben did say exactly what I was trying to get at is what kind of projection did you have in your, in your documents? And if you don't have it in front of you, that's fine. Maybe you can look at it and tell us what it is.
I mean, I could, I don't know. I know that we far exceeded what any town in this county at least has done in terms of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. We have the solar array alone and the LED streetlights and, and all the other things that we do have, you know, they all add up to pretty remarkable numbers. I mean, we wouldn't have been certified if we hadn't. So unless they see movement going down, we were carbon neutral in 2018. That's why we got certified.
I, I understand, I understand that, what you're saying. What I'm, what I'm asking is what you guys projected to be the savings at this point?
I don't think we had a projection. I really, I mean, I think the object, the, the goal was to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. And when I say we were, we declared carbon neutral, we became a climate smart community. That's a big deal. So, I mean, I don't know, they wouldn't have certified us if we hadn't.
Okay. And as far as the LED lights are concerned, who, who is going to maintain those?
Who is going to make what?
Who is going to maintain them?
Oh, Ben, do you want to talk to that?
Yeah, I can, those are going to be maintained by a contract that we have, which is through NYSERDA, one of the companies. And what that will be is instead of actually contacting NICE, like was done in the past where Brandy or one of the board members would go out and actually have to see, is this street light out or is that street light out? And I can show the board at, at some point if they would like. How the maintenance company and the highway superintendent and the board, if they wanted to, could actually get in. Just by going in, we can tell which street lights are out. I know I talked to Bruce regarding one that's out up in lava. When we did the training about a week ago, that was on there. So they already know it. And so as far as the maintenance goes, that's, that's going to be through a company that we sign a maintenance agreement with.
So we, the town will be paying for it. The town will be paying for, yes.
I think that there's, we're, we're doing an aggregation with the maintenance too. So Bethel and, and all the other towns in the area are going to share that one maintenance person and they'll all be on call. I mean, the lights themselves have a lifetime of 25 to 30 years each. Of course, things can happen and we have a warranty for the first year and a half. So nobody's paying for that. So just to give it a little context, it's very, very low maintenance, the LED streetlights.
And the, one of the other things as part of the maintenance program is if, if there's a motor vehicle accident, say, where a pole comes down, they will actually know and they're under obligation for so many hours to be out there. Where in the past it used to be you contact NICE. NICE will come out eventually and take a look at it and it could be a day or two. I believe it's a four hour turnaround time that they're supposed to respond out and actually we get the pole back up. And that's, they're notified by sensors that are in the lights that it's called lean or off center, but they know if, if the light moves a certain number of degrees, that there has been an accident or a tree branch hit it or took it down.
Okay. And, okay. So Brandy, going back to the, the 900 points that you need, the advanced benchmarking would be 200 points. And I, I suspect that that, they're only going to give you those 200 points if you're on target with what your projections were, but possibly not.
No, that's not, no, I mean, there's no question with our solar array that we're lowering our carbon footprint. There's no question. That's the real big number is the electricity that we're paying for. We're not going to miss it because every, you know, we're hooked into this system now for a 25 year contract.
So I think, I think you were saying that no matter what, we've been reduced and so we'll get points. And Alan is saying.
Yeah, Jane, we absolutely would get those points. There's no question.
Okay.
Okay. And what about the renewable electric, which you said it was a heat pump that you installed and we installed in the Town Hall?
You have one right there in the basement. You can see it on the wall there. It's up towards the.
No, I'm just asking that, that's what you, you're going to base those 500 points on, that one?
Well, I was just searching for things that we haven't done yet. We've done so many things. We're really narrowing it down. So that was a thought, oh, wow. I mean, you just started brainstorming. You have this new building. It's not very expensive to put one in and saves tons of money and energy for a town. I know that we've been happy with the air source heat pumps that we have at the Town Hall upstairs and downstairs. So again, this is nothing, you know, I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just thinking of options to, to meet those 900 points.
Okay. And the third thing is the clean fleets, the charging station. And you think the one charging station in the parking lot is going to be enough to get you the 300 points?
A charging station would be 200 points and an electric vehicle would be 300 points. Again, I think that it would be better if, if our code enforcer could take that course, that way he's on top of, you know, the green building codes in New York State, which is growing every minute. I mean, you know, he's, he's been taking courses. I know that. But this is like the 2021 New York State course that is trying to, you know, reduce our greenhouse emissions in, in New York State. So they're changing things and adapting things. I mean, for me, I can't force him to do it. It would be great if he did it for the town to educate himself and then tell people what they can and can't do when they're building. Or options that they could use.
Brandy, you had said that that hadn't come out yet, that course or?
No, it's not out yet. He said within the next month or two, but he told me as soon as it's ready.
Okay. I was kind of hoping it was maybe out already and he already took it.
No. I know he's taken one green course a couple of years ago and I think you told me that, Ben.
Well, you answered the questions I had, so. Well, at least you, you gave an answer.
Normally I don't like to, in work sessions, put forth resolutions or anything. I prefer to do those in the open meetings, but my discussions with Brandy are that time is of the essence in this. So does the board have some discussion regarding the Energy Committee utilizing the funds for the hiring of a consultant?
I think it's a win-win situation.
With a limit of 2,000, is that appropriate, Brandy? With a limit of 2,000?
Yeah, the most. So you don't want the bookkeeper to do it because that would save you guys money?
No, not right now. I mean, I, one thing I know I could do is have you work with the clerk on it because she just had to do a, we had an issue with NICE egg in billing. She had contacted New York State Electric Gas and gave them a certain period of time and they actually gave her the graphs for the electricity. I don't know whether or not that would work with a propane and oil.
That's separate.
Crystal, yeah, that would be separate. I don't know. Crystal, is that something you want to get involved with?
I'd be happy to. If you want to have Nicholas reach out to me or if you want to just let me know exactly the details we need and I can get all the account information for you. I can reach out to NICE and gather everything you need.
Okay, great. So I'll let Nicholas know and he can be specific about it. Karen also said she's available if you ever want to call her. She set up a folder in a, you know, somewhere in the office and anticipating because all the time she, she'd have to give me those numbers. And she gave them to me in like 10 seconds. It was not, you know, she just gave me a whole bunch of bills and we scanned them or whatever we did, copied them and gave it to them. But, so I'll let him know and that'll cut down his costs since you're doing the work, but he can guide you and he's done a little, he, he applied for the LED streetlights. He hasn't put a lot of time into this, but he put that into the, it's a very difficult program, this grant. I mean, it's unbelievably not user-friendly. So that's why we've always used him for years and years. The guy's awesome. So. But he can tell you exactly what he's looking for. So I'll let him know. Should he call you or email you?
Tell him to send a detailed email and then I can get that information.
All right.
Now, they're going to include the propane, the oil and the solar, or is that just a NICE egg? Okay. We'll do it that way.
He can do all those. He can get all that.
She can get all that information for you to give to him?
Let, let me, let him reach out to you, the email, the detailed email, so that I don't want to waste your time on any way, you know, any way. So you can look up whatever numbers he's looking for. He'll tell you what columns or whatever it is to, to make this easier. And, and then we'll, you know, be on our way. So are we allowed to apply for this grant?
I don't see why not. I think the, that's the easy part of it. It's just how much money do you want to take out of your account?
Well, as little as possible. So if Crystal can help us and then you're reducing that cost greatly. So that'll be awesome.
So in the, for the purpose of a resolution to apply for the grant, what number do you want? Do you want to stay to 2,000? Do you want to go less?
Oh, I, yeah, it's definitely going to be less if she's doing all that. I mean, he's done some work. I don't know how many hours he's done for me, but it's minimal. I can ask him, but I mean, it's not, you, you could reduce it to 1,000 maximum, but it's not even going to be that. I don't know what he's done already. He hasn't told me.
Okay. And if you need more, just we'll get you more.
Okay. I mean, you know, the money's there to advance this cause and that's why it's in the bank.
Till you were making a motion, I'm assuming a motion to allow the Tustin Energy Committee to apply for the grant as stated and expend from their account an amount of money up to $1,000?
Good. You made the motion now. I'll second it.
And let's see here. And Brandy, this is just a NYSERDA Clean Energy Communities Grant, correct?
That's exactly it.
Purpose of the resolution. Okay. I have a motion. I have a second by Jill. Jane?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Al?
Hi.
Bruce?
All right.
And I'm an I.
Thank you guys. One last thing is, I just wanted to mention that the Energy Committee has been meeting because we're having a ribbon cutting ceremony on Earth Day, which is April 22nd, coming right up. And we wanted to know, Ben, if you could say a few words. It's just going to be brief. It's going to be live streaming on Facebook on the Energy Committee page. And it's not going to be long-winded talks and everything, but we'd like, you know, people who supported this along the way of note to give a couple sentences. Would you do that?
Um, what are you talking about?
It's April 22nd at noon at the Horse. I mean, if you can get there, hence the noon, that would be better.
I will be in Virginia, but I can always reach out to the deputy.
Let me check the deputy's calendar.
I would love to be there, but I am, I am due to be in Virginia for that week.
I can do it.
But I do have a number one stand-up that can fill in for me if that's okay.
Oh yeah, she's pretty good. I'll take her.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, and Jill is on the committee too. So you're going to be out of town, Jill? I don't remember.
Well, I won't be here for our meeting on Monday because I'll be on a plane, but.
You'll be here for that date?
As far as I know, yes. And if that changes, you know, because I'm just finding out from Franklin what my work is going to be and when I'm starting, but that's not all set in stone because we have to get a new water pump and we need, you know, stuff. So right now I'm there.
All right, great. So we have representation for the town ward and we have, we have other people from DEC coming and, and all that kind of stuff. And restaurants who are participating to open it up. And so it's, it's almost open to, for business. So thank you guys for the support. to uh, for business. So thank you, guys, for the support and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brandy.
Right. Thanks, Brandy.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ken, I don't know that we're going to have a lot on this um agenda. I think the bank was one of the biggest concerns that uh, we might have needed something for tonight to set the agenda. You're more than welcome to stay, but it's getting late. We understand if we see the black screen.
I'll stick around for a few more minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thanks, I appreciate that, Ben.
First item for the agenda that we're going to need for next week is going to be the pandemic policy. That was sent to the board probably six weeks ago. Uh, I've been waiting for the two unions to get back. One has, one has not, but that is supposed to have been approved by the board by April first, I believe. So we'll need to, if there's any questions on that, they should come up this week so that we can be prepared to pass that next week.
Where did we get that? Did you get it? Is it? It was what? No, I know I saw it, but it is.
I made that up with the assistance of the Association of Towns.
Okay, good. That's what I needed to know.
Number two is the all-popular password policy. We still need to to have a password policy um in order to get our cyber security insurance. I know last go at it, we were, had a couple of things that we didn't like. One of them was the uh the changing of the passwords every ninety days. Um, I think we can, we can change that out of there with no problem and still pass it and be acceptable by the insurance company. So if that's taken out of there, is the board good with this? Or are there other things that they want to do? Um, I would ask them to at least to bring that for for passing next week. I know, Jane, you were not very happy with this every ninety days.
No, absolutely not. Thank you.
No, I think, I think that's a really overkill.
Okay, why don't we take that out? Because that was a suggestion from the Association of Towns. And uh, also, no, actually, it was from Dimer. That was one of the suggestions. But it wasn't one of the the ones that, you know, they said we absolutely had to have. So if we can look through that for the rest of the week and bring forward any other issues that we could get this passed, so that I can get that policy started before somebody from some other country holds this ransom. Any other questions on that?
I think that there was, I think that was the only question.
It seemed to be. It did, but uh, I mean, everybody came at me with knives and swords hatchets, so I don't know if they had enough time to look at the rest of it to find the other things they didn't like. But I'll settle with just one thing.
Yeah, no, I think the password thing was, I read through it and the password thing seemed to be the the stickler, but I I do think that it should have some kind of provision to change the password and maybe it's an annual basis. Or six-month basis or something like that.
I think most places, um, and I know Jane had talked about some of the uh, the state, you know, going into them when we go in once a year. And what I've found is most of those are the the ninety days or hundred and twenty days, and that's why we're changing them. So I mean, if we went with one year, I think we would be safe with that because uh, most of the things that we're going into, like the EVO, one of the reasons we couldn't get into the EVO was because of we hadn't been in there so long that the password was supposed to be changed and they just lock you out when you don't change it in time. So probably a year would be fine, I would believe.
It seems to be what the state uses as a guide, so.
So I'll bring that back, back to us as number two on our on our agenda. Stone bids was the other. We have received some stone bids. I will go through who we've got them from. Deckelman LLC has bid for anti-skid and sand. They've also, Deckelman has also bid for stone. R and H Gore has bid for anti-skid and sand. Or I'm sorry, anti-skid sand is the same thing. R H Core is also bid for stone. E R Lindy has bid for stone. And Rutledge Excavating has bid for stone. So, yes, I'm sorry, it is on the top. I will give these to the town clerk to make sure that they've all got their proper noncollusions and other paperwork in order. And then these will be given to the highway superintendent for his recommendation at our next board meeting. So we'll put that on for number three. Number four, I did get a request and I will forward an email to the board for the honeybee festival. Tustin Town Board, Hope All as well. We would like permission from the town to have the Narrowsburg Honeybee Festival on Saturday, the twenty-fifth of September from four to eight P M. We would like Main Street to be closed from three to eight thirty P M. Promotion will be limited. Mess will be recommended and vendors and events will be decreased from previous years in order to ensure safety protocols, assuming things will be the same or improved. Um, of course, if things change, we adhere to CDC protocols. So I'll have that on the uh agenda as number three, I believe. Is there any questions that the board has regarding that that I can get hold of the honeybee organizers? Uh, this was signed by Joan Santo. Uh, Charles Wilken and Martin Higgins. Okay, we've got the post office, um, the feeding grain, um, in these emergency services for notifications. I can advise them of that. Is there anything else from the board that they would request? Um, from that that I could get squared away before the next meeting?
I think they they have to notify the prior department.
Yeah, that would, I would have them do that under emergency services. And I don't know if I'm gonna be able to get up this next letter, because I have it. Let me get out of my large screen. Um, I have a letter from Aaron Hicklin. Um, I would like to ask if we might close Main Street again for Friday, the twenty-eighth of May for a Fridays on Main event. This would involve live music and dining on the street, much like the two or three such events we hosted last year. We'd keep the same COVID precautions, social distancing, requiring masks, et cetera, and would maintain trash cans and monitor Bridge Street to prevent cars parking where parking is not allowed. And they're asking that uh, again, for the twenty-eighth of May. In what time?
It's just a couple hours, I hope.
Yeah, let me just get back in there. You know what? That was not in there, so that will be one of the things that I'm gonna have to find out from them. I thought it was. I apologize for that. But it does not have it in there.
No, that's a holiday weekend, so it should be kind of limited.
Yeah, that would just, they would just be closed, they would only uh they would only be closed in uh, up to the church or the church, the uh
Municipal parking lot.
Correct. Thank you.
That's why I'm a deputy.
Okay, and that would, that would also, I'll get the times for that. Um, also the same thing with the uh feeding grain, because the trucks can only go one way, the emergency services. I'll find a time in uh the same as a honeybee fest, so that the parking lot is open. And the post office. We got a request from the Lions Club, number six, for the cleanup day to add the Lions Club on there for electronic recycling. Um, they've asked to add that to the cleanup day. I believe it's going to be twenty dollars per car. And they will recycle the electronics.
What Lions Club?
Ken, Ken.
There are three members in the Lions Club in this town, I think.
Well, at least they're very active for the cleanup and the recycling.
So what's he asking for?
Um, just to be added to our cleanup day, um, up at the highway department.
So maybe that should go out in publicity.
It could. I'm sorry, Al?
No, I think that's a very good uh, thing to have.
Oh, yeah.
You can't get rid of those things anymore. No, not for twenty dollars a car loan, no.
I think businesses might be more, but I I know personal was twenty. We'll find out. We'll have that the next meeting. Um, number seven for the list is we need to, uh, and I believe we just spoke of this at the last meeting, the backdating of the court officer resolution for the pay. Uh, during the annual audit, they said that they wanted to have our hourly rates listed on the audit. So the clerk will have for next meeting all those that have hourly rates, um, when we do our uh, beginning of the year salaries, that the hourly rates are actually shown. Some are, but some were not. Yeah, some were not. Um, which also brings me in regards to that, uh, which will be number eight. We need to create a custodial fund. Um, this is an accounting bulletin that came out of the office of the state comptroller. The custodial fund is going to place uh, take place uh, with the agency fund, the T and A fund that we have. Um, so it's just a change in the name. The account codes of the former agency fund have been deactivated in the twenty twenty A U D, the annual update document, and applicable account codes have been added to the new custodial fund.
What is the purpose of the custodial?
Uh, it's going to be the same as the agency, trusted agency fund. So the the account where we would take our monies for things like payroll. They're just renaming it. In order for us to do that, we will need a board resolution, I believe. Correct, Ken? We're changing the name of funds. I'll take that as a yes.
Did he leave?
No.
No, I was muted. The answer was yes, Ben, sorry.
I I had to throw something in there to, when we make you stay all this time, that uh this is the reason why. Um, number nine, and I'm just kind of throwing this, I'm I'm gonna forward an email to the uh, to the board. Um, Jane's worked very hard and and Jane, I I know that you don't expect me to say anything on this tonight, but it's in relation to our water tower. I I've got a an inspection that was done in twenty twelve by an engineering company to our water tower with some suggestions on it. I did some research and I contacted some people from uh, the past to find out if anything was done on this, and nothing was done on it. So I think the board needs to, once I send this out to them, make a decision about how quickly we want to move on some of the uh, items that have been on our engineering list, including the water tower. And once you read the uh you read this, I think it'll drive home some importance to it and uh
You don't even have to read the two thousand twelve. Read the ones that Delaware Engineering. It doesn't need cleaning anymore. It needs replacement.
And there's, there are some things that came up in this that uh and I apologize if I only got it uh, within the last day from from Dave and we went over it. And I wanted to make sure that nothing was done to mitigate what was found in this inspection. And nothing was done that was found in the inspection. And uh, I think the board needs to seriously consider um doing something with at least the first part of it.
We, and the board uh, needs to know the price tag associated with that.
Right. So that we'll have a discussion on that uh, at the next meeting. I'll send everything out to the boards that they know what it is. And we've also talked about our rates, our water rates. So I will get all of that to the board for this week. It's gonna be a lot of discussion. Jane?
Well, uh, yeah, I asked Delaware Engineer, but let's go back a little bit to the engineering report has been complete for a while, but the funds to uh, the government funds that normally fund this has been shut down for a year. So we're back a year. So I asked Delaware Engineering to look at their budget again and make any adjustments for inflation that's happened. So I just got that um, a couple of days ago. So I will send that to everybody so that you can see how much the water tower is, how much everything is. It did not change as much as I thought it would change, but
And I'm gonna forward to the board this email, uh, the email that I have that has this uh, twenty twelve inspection. And puts emergency to it. We've done a lot of work over the last year to to put into our priorities. I think now the board needs to make the hard decisions on what are we gonna do to start fixing what we've got?
So you're, you're sort of suggest, taking this on, you're sort of suggesting that we um, probably bond now?
I think that's a conversation we're gonna have to have with with Ken and uh, you know, with the water rates and uh yes, you know, we we've got some missing water. We've got a a certain amount of water that that we are producing and treating. And that number is far off from the number that's actually flowing through the meters. Last, last, we're being, we're talking about some uh sort of getting a calibrations done on meters. Um, and when I looked at this report that was done uh, regarding the tower, you can't rule out that we're losing water from the tower large amounts.
So that's what you're concerned about, the loss of water from the tower? I think there's more places than that.
More places than that. What, um, that's number one on the priority list as far as the all of the things that the engineering company came up with. So I think that's where we need to look at first. And uh
And the other thing the board should know is when we did look at the rates to adjust the rates, the rates were adjusted to um, meet the budget, not um, yeah, just to meet the budget, not to pay for a water tower. So what, uh, so I will send the new, the new budget to everyone? Or I'll send it to you, Crystal. You're better at sending out to Crystal, budget. I'll copy, Ben.
And then tonight, I will, before I leave the meeting, I will forward this report to the board members so that they know what it looks like. And then we can speak with Ken as far as what's the best way to proceed. Which is, will be a bonding issue, for sure. We don't, we don't have the money set aside to do this.
Oh, under the uh what is it, the I forgot what they were calling it, the American Rescue Plan?
Yes, and I believe I just sent Jane, I sent you an email regarding some funding that has opened up.
Yeah, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the town of Tustin, which can be used to uh, for uh, water and sewer and um, some other things that we we're looking at. So maybe this would help.
And there is another thing that I had sent to Jane that just came, that I just gotten in regarding uh, specifically infrastructure water funding.
Which one is it? We do have Delaware Engineering working right now on something that closes. They have to have it in April fifteenth.
Um, but, and you know, we can have a discussion on on the next board meeting. It might be one of those things. Um, and we can discuss it with Ken. We might want to bond it until the money comes in. Because
Oh, you can do that?
Well, that's why we'd have the discussion with Ken. It's just it's been over a decade and nothing's getting done.
That wouldn't be very good, then.
The only problem with that, with that money that I was just talking about is only, it comes to you in over two years. And you have, I think, until twenty twenty-four to spend it.
Which is the one hundred thousand?
The hundred and sixty thousand.
Well, we can spend that easily on water. Well, we can spend that easily on water. I mean. No question. I think the water tower is. Isn't it close to a million? Is it a million?
It was, yeah, it's it's a lot of.
It's a million dollars.
It was something that if we had fixed a decade ago, would have been about a hundred or two hundred thousand dollars. You know, things change and and a lot of the things that change are the regulations that govern them and how you put them up. You know. They they now they can't be painted and they have to be glass lined and then, you know, as with all things, it's it's changed.
I've been trying.
I think that's, you know, my takeaway is that we just need to put some urgency to. Our system and start moving forward. Ken, is that an issue as far as bonding something and then getting funding later for it?
Yeah, no, that's not a problem. What you can do is you can you can bond it by doing bond anticipation notes for a year or two. And when you get the your whatever your grant money or any other things that come in, then you can if whatever else you left have left over. Then you can close out with a longer term bond and just and finalize it that way if you need to.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Does the board have anything else as far as? Item agendas or creation of agenda items? You're all good?
I have so much going on, I'm not sure.
I'm giving Jane just a second. There's some rattling going on.
Well, no, if I can just say that. Any anybody knows? No, I guess I won't even say it. No, I guess not. I'll tell you with the point we are at right now is getting approval for the right of way for the Little Lake Erie Temporary Bridge. There's four. Property owners that are involved. I have sign off on one so far. Somebody hit those others.
Our next regular meeting.
Well, maybe we should put on the agenda to. To to the floors. You want that on the agenda?
No.
Well, then just.
Can take care of. That's that does need to be an agenda item. That's a maintenance item. We're good with that. At our next regular meeting, we will have the public hearing regarding the twenty twenty one comprehensive plan. That is scheduled for the start of our regular town board meeting, April thirteenth at six thirty P M. With the normal Zoom ID of eight ninety sixteen seventy eight forty two eighty.
And we could just mention to the board that we did have the first public comment session last night, and it went pretty well, I think. We had at least four or five different people commenting. And then we, after the comment session ended, we as a committee went through and addressed every one of those. So.
Yeah, I thought it went well. And then once we have the public hearing. Peter will instruct the board what the next steps are as far as. Getting our. Seacard and sending it to the county, sending it to the upper Delaware Council, waiting for that to come back from them before we can pass it, but possibly being passed in May.
Yeah, I I'm anticipating it'll be passed in May. Which is great.
Any other discussion? Any comments from the public? I would make a motion up.
I've got a quick question. Can can? People outside the board look at the pandemic policy?
They can if they want to.
Where is that located?
Right now it is. I don't. It's not on the town website.
Then how do I look at it?
I I could actually email you a draft copy of it if you wanted.
That'd be awesome. Is that the same as the Sullivan County Legislature?
I didn't read through theirs because but it's it's laid out in basically the same. Type of a format. You have to have your essential, your nonessential workers, and then what the protocols are going to be. Should you have an infectious disease?
Yeah, if you could send me that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm excited if we get.
If there's, yes, Vicky.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Actually, I have three questions. The first one is regarding the LED streetlights. If I recall from the last meeting, I thought we will have some kind of a spreadsheet to. Explain how much savings and what's, you know, what's the maintenance fee? To let us know how much we really can save from the. New contract. Also. This new contract, it's twenty five years. I don't know what's the regular term, but to me seems is. It's like a quarter decade. I mean, quarter century, so it's a long contract. So I just wondering if the board has. More data to show us. The second question is about the green energy. You're talking about a lot of the projection. I think it's a really good question from Al. I mean. We can talk the project all day long. Okay, how do we did a great job? We did much better than the other town. But we I just want to see, you know, if there's any data, some numbers to support, okay? How much we can save and at least, you know, some kind of percentage. Okay, if we do this. Green energy project and then we can save ten percent, fifteen percent from, you know, certain amount. It's not just like, oh, we we can. We do great. We we can save a lot of money, something like that. And the third one. I think Ben made a really good call to hire Nicholas instead of a bookkeeper to do the professional job. Even though it's a fifty dollars an hour, I think. Down to the role, I think it'll be worth it. Just let the professional do their job. That's all. Thank you.
The one, the one question. Hold on a second. Hold on a second, Randy. I don't. I don't want to get into a back and forth over this. As far as the green energy that that you're asking about, Vicky, that's that's kind of what the Energy Committee is doing right now. It's. What they're gonna do is benchmark and show how much we have saved as a result of it. And like she said in the beginning. She, the Energy Committee was able to meet the goals of New York State by giving them. Do I have the numbers and things to give to you in front of me? No, I do not. But they were able to get those numbers and satisfy the state of New York in order to meet all of the objections to get to the certifications that they've gotten to. I'm sure that the Energy Committee could probably produce something for you at some point in time. Same thing with the LED streetlights. I did have a conversation with. The CEO of, he actually came down and visited from Nice Egg. And that is one of the questions that I had posed to him was, you know, us buying these. Streetlights from you and now doing our own and the maintenance and everything. And I got a very. Positive reassuring. Response from him, you know, he didn't, you know, he he's the person that's running this this international company. And he's not saying to me, man, I wouldn't have done that, you know, it was. Positive reinforcement that it is the right thing to do and. To be honest with you, when you look at the type of light that they give out. And having received the training on what the capabilities are of the system. And then looking at the maintenance program that. We have entered into for this. It is a better system and it will serve the town better in the long run. I just wish that we were able to take this program and actually extend it a little bit more and get to some of the outlying areas of the town. But because of the smart technology, it's not there yet. So this was a beginning.
Okay, thank you. Ben, can I just chime in one second? Because. There was some misinformation there. There the solar array is a twenty five year lease. And we're saving a hundred and sixty thousand dollars over that period of time for consume, you know, for the residents. The LEDs we just bought are lights. There's no lease. There's no, we we own the lights. Now we're paying back. And I think it's a matter of eight years and we pay back the whole loan. It's a low interest loan by New York State. Power Authority. If you want to know how much we're saving on that, which is hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars that's in the contract. I'm not just making it up. I mean. I was just here to ask if I could apply for a grant. I I wasn't prepared with data because. I mean, we really are like the number one in the county. Town that has achieved. Tons and tons of money saving and energy saving goals. It's been ten years of efforts, just so you know. And the expert is gonna be Crystal because she's gonna be working with Nicholas. She's gonna be doing the work that he asks her to find. So again. He's going to be plugging it into the into the application, but I just want to straighten those three things out because they were a little off there.
If there is nothing forward further, I will make a motion to adjourn. I have a second from Al. Jill?
Hi.
Jane?
Hi.
Bruce? I'm an I. To what I forget. Nobody. Thank you. Ken, thank you. We'll be in touch. Thank you.
Take care.